Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I call to order the Lynchburg Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, July 11, 2018. Thank you all for coming. We are going to... We're gonna jump right into our public hearing items. I realize that these were postponed due to our previous meeting being canceled. I apologize for the delay and any inconvenience. Our first public hearing item is the petition of Todd Decourcy, Thomas Road Baptist, to rezone approximately twenty-three hundredths of an acre at 4259 White Street from R2 Low Medium Density Residential to R3 Medium Density Residential to allow the use of an existing structure as a duplex. Rachel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of Planning Commission. As you said, this property is currently zoned R2 Low Density Residential and is proposed for R3 Medium Density Residential to allow for the use of a duplex. This would be in the existing single-family home. The zoning on the property is intended for residential development at low densities together with public uses, institutional uses, et cetera, that may be compatible in scale with single-family homes. The R2 zoning does not allow for duplexes. The city's comprehensive plan recommends an institutional use for the subject property and low-density residential for the surrounding areas. Institutional uses include religious, educational, and other nonprofit entities in the city, such as churches, private schools, universities, hospitals, et cetera. These areas, excuse me, low-density residential areas are dominated by single-family homes. Other uses include public and institutional uses when appropriate. The proposed rezoning at 4529 White Street really doesn't hold a lot of impact for the neighborhood. The existing parking appears sufficient. The duplex itself would go into the existing single-family home. No exterior modifications would be required. Therefore, the fabric of the neighborhood wouldn't really appear any different. It's gonna retain the look of a single-family home. The Technical Review Committee has reviewed the petition, and comments related to that will be addressed at the final site plan stage. And based on these facts, the Planning Division does recommend approval of the petition.
Great, thank you. Who is here to speak on behalf of this petition? We're gonna do public comments in just a minute. Thank you.
I'm gonna try not to. Good evening. My name is Norm Walton with Perkins and Orson. I'm representing Thomas Road Baptist Church on this matter. Thomas Road Baptist Church currently owns this property. They would like to use this for housing of missionaries. As they come and leave Lynchburg, I would anticipate that they would be there longer than several months, so this wouldn't be a transitional type of occupancy. As Rachel mentioned, we're not proposing any outside improvements to the site. There is adequate parking there already. There will be obviously some improvements to the property internal. They're planning on doing a renovation to allow for the duplex. The duplex will be split by floors, so the top floor will be one unit and the bottom floor will be another, and there's access to the top floor from the exterior of the site. There's members of Thomas Road Baptist Church here and myself to entertain any questions you may have during your deliberation. If you have any questions now, I'd be more than happy to try to answer them.
Great. We may be calling you back up in a bit.
All right, thank you.
Is there a member of the public who would like to speak in favor of this petition?
I would like to speak on it, but I don't know if I'm in favor or not.
You can go ahead and come up now then, please. You can sign in and state your name and address, and we'll be glad to hear your comments.
I see my neighborhood's represented. It's just me.
And we do give speakers three minutes.
Okay, no.
But go ahead and sign in first. I won't count you signing in part.
I'm really just curious. I've lived there for forty-two years, and I just had a few questions as well. This pen is not very good either. That's okay, I'll just...
And you can also tell us your name, please?
My name is Linda Poor, and I live on 4314 White Street. I've been in that home for forty-two years. The third oldest person on the street, not by age, but, you know, living there. I was just curious because, and maybe I answered my own questions coming here, but there are a lot of apartments in our neighborhood, but everything is still zoned R2, so maybe it's the fact that you're taking a house and you're making it into a duplex. And I was curious about what kind of stewards there will be overlooking the property. We do have a dead-end street, and if... Now, I don't know about missionary families. Will they stay there any length of time, or is it a lot of people coming and going? I will say that the house looks nice. It did not for a long period of time, but it does. I mean, what I see on the outside of it, so... I'm just curious, you know, and I feel like it's not even, you know, a half of an acre, but I just think you need to check on it if you live in the neighborhood. You know, it's a declining neighborhood, actually, so, you know, you just wanna check. Everything is going. We have a lot of renters in the neighborhood, so I'm just curious as well. I just wanna know that there'll be good stewards, they'll take care of the property, and if there won't be lots of people, you know? It's a small street. If everyone comes and there's eight cars in one yard, but that's it. I'm surprised we don't have more people here, but there's... Some of them are very old, so...
Okay. Well, we will address your concerns as we proceed through the hearing.
Yeah, I mean, I'm all for progress. Like I said, the house looks nice, but I heard that inside hasn't been done.
All right. Well, we will deliberate on this.
I don't care about that. It's mostly just traffic and extra.
Okay, thanks. Is anyone else here from the public to speak in favor? Sign in and state your name, please.
Okay. My name's Kenny Craig. I'm the... I was with Liberty University. Liberty University owns property adjoining this property. I'm just here to speak in favor of this petition. I really don't have anything else to offer unless you have any questions of me.
Okay. We may have some as we move forward.
Okay, good.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in favor? Is there anyone opposed? Mr. Walton, as petitioner, would you like to address any of Ms. Ford's concerns?
Sorry, sign in.
Are you speaking in opposed, or...
Oh, no, really, addressing the questions that the lady...
Sorry, you're representing Thomas Road then?
Yes.
Okay, that's fine. Come on up, sign in, state your name, so we're on the same page. Thanks.
Sure. Yeah, so I'd like to address the questions that Ms. Poor had. So, yes, the church has owned...
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but what did you say your name was?
Oh, Todd, I'm sorry. Todd Decourcy, yes.
Okay.
So, the church has owned the property for some time now and have used it as a single family. With some recent changes into existing property, it's become... We're hoping that this property can use for up to two families. Basically, we have families that will come in usually and stay about a month to a month and a half, and at this point, we haven't even had a request for even a second family, and, you know, so it's been at least a couple of months. So, I don't anticipate from prior utilization that we'll see a lot of traffic coming and going. Like I said, a lot of times, a family will stay anywhere between two weeks and a month, and so, and as far as the continued upkeep, we definitely, as owners of the property, will continue to monitor and make sure that the property is maintained. I think recently, you may have seen some work within the last couple of months where our missions pastor, Tim, went out there and they did a lot of renovation of the property, and so we'll definitely continue to do that. That's definitely gonna be a high priority, be a good neighbor for the neighborhood as well, so...
Okay, great. Thank you. We may have some follow-up questions, and we're getting a follow-up queue as well, Ms. Ford. All right, at this point, the public hearing is closed. Commissioners questions or comments, or staff or petitioners?
I guess I have one question. You know, something like this, you know, in a neighborhood where you have a bunch of R2 around it, and then Thomas Road owns it now, but what happens when it gets sold, if it gets sold? And how does that change the complexion of the neighborhood if we're changing that or the precedent of continually changing that? We've run into some of the same things with the school. But the school, that was a, you know, very institutional plot of land. So, that was why... I spoke with several neighbors, and that was one of their concerns, too, is, well, if this sells, you know, as part of a portfolio, decide to sell it, you know, somebody buys it, and then we don't... We love the missionaries. We might not really like what follows.
Well, the redesignation would stick with it regardless of owner.
Right.
So, if this was a request to rezone to institutional, duplex would still not be allowed, right?
To rezone to institutional?
Yeah.
Well, this wouldn't really be an appropriate institutional designation. Those are designed for campus-type settings. I mean, it's already... It's institutional on the flume, but it's not institutional zoning.
Right, so why would the flume... I know the flume is looking at the big picture, but why would the flume include a house like this, just the fact it was owned by Thomas Road, so it kind of...
Probably so, and I'm not sure what this looks like under this zoning, but they do this... They own this larger tract here, so it may be, you know, just another access point for if this were developed further and there ended up needing to access through here or something like that.
Well, odds of that Liberty-owned adjacent property and other property on the street there, we do...
They bought Thomas Road.
Oh, they...
Yeah.
...the church. My question was, you mentioned that they weren't making any changes to the outside, but if they did, or if they plan to... Once they get to the plan stage, you will review those, right?
If a site plan was required...
In this case, they're not going to, and that's kind of a holdover comment. You know, there... Lots of times, the Technical Review Committee will approve with comments and say something like, you know, the fire marshal says, you know, keep in mind fire access. Well, that's a comment, but it's just something for their information.
So, what if twenty years down the road, and it's R3, and somebody decides, okay, this building's old, it needs to be torn down, and they wanna put whatever you can put in R3, some apartments there, I suppose, right?
You can't do apartments in R3, no. R3 is smaller lot sizes for single-family duplex, and it's really not that much more open than R2.
All right, so you can't do much more with that.
No.
And the access to the second floor is the door on the left-hand side, I'm assuming, if you're facing the house from the street?
Correct.
Well, I think when I drove around the neighborhood, it doesn't initially seem like a great fit, except that you are using the same structure. If we were getting this request, if you can go back, Rachel, to the... Yeah, yeah.
Zoning, flume.
The future, the flume. If we were getting this request for a property that was surrounded by R2, I think I would be more hesitant. Because this is buffering up against institutional, it does allow for that transitional type of land use that I see as an appropriate fit. There is off-street parking. Ms. Ford, you made a comment about cars, so I think between the off-street parking and the on-street parking, there would be enough.
I did not understand that they're gonna add two parking places anyway. I don't understand that as part of the...
Two existing apartments.
Right.
On the off-street?
Yes, there's already a driveway.
You can usually put two vehicles on the off-street, and then on-street, you have parking as well.
I think, yeah, I just thought I'd seen that you're gonna add two more parking places for the duplex.
No, no, we're not adding any.
Okay, I misunderstood that. Okay.
Okay, what the report says is, you know, if we were using the same rules as apartments, which is one, which, obviously, this is not apartments, but if we were using the same ratio, it's one parking space required per unit. That would be requiring two spaces.
Right.
I think there are two spaces in the driveway already, plus there's on-street parking available, too.
I got it, I got it.
So, the... It looks like all of Biltmore on one side is R3 already, so from the corner down, on that side of Biltmore is R3. And then the large piece of land that has road frontage is actually really part of the R3. It's part in the flume, that's part of Liberty's land. So, it's really, yeah, the yellow right in front of it, right there where your hand is, that's also part of Thomas Road, the old Thomas Road property, so it is really all together.
Yeah. But there is nothing to stop them from turning into student housing down the road, right? As long as you've got three unrelated individuals in each of the duplexes.
It could be.
Could be, potentially.
Go run into Lynchburg College type.
Yeah, it wouldn't be so much maybe church. You're talking about Liberty University?
Yeah, that's... I think that's more...
The church, there would be something, I would say the church would have to be owned to be, but we are distinct in property ownership between Liberty and church.
I think we're thinking about the what-if.
Yeah, no, but on paper, there's nothing to stop it from happening.
But all that R3 is all privately owned, all on Biltmore, so...
That gets back to my point. We're not looking at a piece of property surrounded by R2.
Right.
And I would look at it differently if we were.
Where are you saying on R3? You said Biltmore.
Biltmore here. There's R3 zoned property here.
This house is on White Street.
No, but we're just referring to the neighborhood.
To the surrounding neighborhood.
Yeah.
Rachel, does... If this gets approved, do you... I mean, does it open up the door for 4251 and 4243 and, you know, somewhere down the road to say, well, you did it for 4259, we wanna change, you know, we... That we wanna change these to duplexes, you know, because you did allow... I mean, does it open that door? Or do you feel because it's owned by Thomas Road that it should have kind of a special consideration?
Well, looking at the flume, I mean, this is... It's a duplex, but it's sort of incidental to the church. Looking at the flume, this is still low-density residential, where to support a duplex, we'd be looking for a higher-density residential indicated on the flume. So, I guess in some ways, the neighbors could argue that this could set a precedent, but I think as staff, we would look at this and say, you know, the whole area is not intended to develop at a higher density.
You're covering yourself by having the comprehensive plan only include the one house.
Right, and if it did become an issue where neighbors were banding together, saying that we, you know, we wanna change this, then we'd probably look at the neighborhood more comprehensively, but...
So, 4237 on the corner down there, close to your hand, that's actually currently being used as a duplex, but it's not... It obviously isn't conforming, so...
How do you know that?
'Cause I went and looked at it. So, if, let's just say, Thomas Road decided to be able to buy all these, or maybe Liberty, then would it make it more... That much more impossible than to move across the street? Do you feel like the streets provide a safe boundary for the R2 in that situation, crossing the street?
You're asking if they were to buy these...
Yeah, so let's say all those turn to R3, like Biltmore is already on that side. Do you feel like the houses on the other side are... You know, in our plan and in looking in the future, do you feel like they'd still be protected? I think a lot of people are worried that within their neighbor, might... Their house might become a duplex.
Right.
If we were looking at a situation where we were pretty sure that we're gonna then spot an R3 across the street as well, that it seems a little... It like makes sense, 'cause then it fills out an area that's bounded by a street.
Right, so I think Planning Staff would consider that very carefully. Somebody mentioned Lynchburg College. I don't know if you guys recall, but they didn't actually end up going to council with the two duplexes, but at one point, they had petitioned to have, you know, basically student housing like they do in that neighborhood, actually not far from here, on the southern side of Lakeside Drive, and there's a ton of them, and they've gotten CUPs, like thirty, forty CUPs over the years to get Lynchburg College students into those houses at a higher occupancy rate. They did petition to have a couple houses on the northern side of Lakeside Drive, and Planning Staff actually recommended against that because of the... It was already sort of an established trend on that lower half, the southern side of Lakeside Drive, but it does significantly change the character of the neighborhood. So, in making that leap on the northern side, Planning Staff didn't feel that was appropriate. So, I do think there's value to what you're saying about the streets being sort of a boundary. You know, if Liberty did... Or, excuse me, Thomas Road Baptist Church, they're different entities, I realize that. If the church did buy up those properties and turn them all into duplexes or petition, which I don't know that that would get approved, because neighborhood would probably be upset, I don't think continuing to go further and further into the neighborhood is appropriate.
Rachel, wouldn't this be achieved by a CUP rather than a rezoning though?
Not a duplex, no.
Also, what did Lynchburg College do?
That was in the previous zoning. Well, I'm trying to remember.
The issue with Lynchburg College, if I remember correctly, was when they mapped out their, I think Tom called it Strategic Plan, they were... They'd already mapped out usage within that, within their boundaries. The houses that came to us and the houses that turned into duplexes were outside the boundaries of what they had matched in their plan.
Well, I know, but across Lakeside Drive, but I'm talking about the ones in the neighborhood that you said they had gotten...
Because it was student housing. It was framed as student housing rather than a duplex. That's Robin's reminding me.
Right.
So, student housing is not...
And that was all done prior to...
So, that allows you to have more than three unrelated people in a house if it's called student housing?
Right.
So, there's also the protection of this not becoming student housing without a CUP also.
That's correct. I mean, if that were the case, I believe Liberty is using the old church as a theological school. Is that right? So, there are students nearby, but it... And technically, they're still, I mean, they would be in conformance if they had three unrelated people per unit. I mean, that's... There's nothing stopping them from doing that.
Right, and I think it's important to note, we're not against student housing, per se. We just are trying to think of the neighborhood's...
Yes.
...long-term responses. But I do think, you and Kenzie bring up good points, if someone were to come back before us and look at those other four properties to the northeast, because the flume has them designated as R2, to me, that would be a much bigger petition.
Right.
So, I think it would involve a change in the flume, a change in zoning, and I don't think we're setting a precedent because of that designation.
Right.
I see what you're saying.
Well, I would be less inclined to support it, let me put it that way.
Okay, well, I think the flume, that looks a little gerrymandered and arbitrary to me. Just the fact... I think the fact that that building was owned by Thomas Road or Liberty, I'm not sure who owns it, 'cause I thought he said Liberty, but at any rate, that's why it got to be blue instead of yellow on that map.
No, that's a good point.
But I'm not... I'm not so opposed to this thing happening. I think the use that they're talking about sounds benign, and I just, like Kenzie says, what's gonna happen in the future, what is it gonna do to the neighborhood? But we don't see anybody out here jumping up and down and complaining about it either, and that's...
Well, if you know the neighborhood, some of the people there, some are not... Or they're very old, you know, a few that I know would complain. I think maybe they might think they're coming to city council, and I just happen to be where I can see the sign and know, but, well, I mean, what can they do, you know, other than say what they want to about it?
Yeah, I spoke to several neighbors. I spoke to several that were supportive, one right across the street. He referred me to you, Ms. Poor, and I know Jenny, so it's... I, you know, you start knowing some of the people around the area, kinda get an idea. And I spoke to one person a little bit further down, and she was worried, 'cause she's across the street. Her son was worried, well, what happens across the street then? And that's why I asked about it being across the street. The person who lived beside it was actually supportive of it. She's like, I'd like to see people in there more regularly, you know? So, I think that it's either like kind of concern, not against the organization or who's gonna be in it, maybe more concerned about the future, you know? And that's, I think that's the biggest thing. You know, there's concern for the future of what might happen later down the line.
Well, here's the issue. If they wanted to, Thomas Road could build R3 right at the back of those R2 lots, 'cause that's all R3 behind there.
No, it's R2.
Not behind there, I believe, is it?
Yeah.
Did I misread that?
It's R3.
I think it's R3.
Oh, it is R2.
Let's see, they could put...
It's R2.
Yeah, but I'm saying you could still...
Down, it's a parking lot, but...
Well, but I mean, but it is now. But my... You know, 'cause I've been playing the same game of how bad would you feel if that were the case? How bad, you know, that's... That would be the worst... I mean, like Indians on the Ridge in a cowboy movie versus what you're talking about, 'cause I think having those fours, you know, was, I think, worse. I would be much less inclined to do it on that particular situation, but, you know, I think, Tom, you brought the point up earlier. How do we think about this? Because in some ways, I look at this exactly like we look at the property that Spring Hill Cemetery did. People are moving out, they're cycling out of the neighborhood, property's gonna come up. You know, Thomas Road would be a logical... Would be a logical buyer for those properties, I'm assuming. You know, maybe not, but they'd certainly be in the mix. So, now all of a sudden, you know, now you're looking at something where they, you know, just through attrition could have that. How do you feel about that? And I'm not sure, you know, to your point, I'm not sure what we can do about that, I'm not sure how I feel about it, to your point. I'm not sure that's a good... I'm not sure I'm inclined to accept that. Though I think that, on the other hand, you've got... I think it makes sense to put missionary housing in there. I think it fits with the neighborhood, it fits with the diversity issues, it fits with the... Could be a... I mean, I'm thinking about having myself in that neighborhood. That would be something that would be... That I'd be interested in. So, I don't... I guess what I'm saying at the end of the day is, how do we think about this? How do we think about... 'Cause it makes sense now. Well, it makes sense in ten years. We don't know what the situation's gonna be, but have we been good stewards of the property? And what's our model gonna be to make that happen? 'Cause I'm not happy with all five of those properties being R3. 'Cause I think there is enough. I don't think that street's enough to jump, and I think it does change the flavor of the community.
I have a question. Does this lot, 4251... I have a question, does, does this lot forty-two fifty-nine go all the way back down the hill to the parking lot?
It's the, it's just the red portion, that's the property line.
The yellow that's behind it and surrounds it, I mean, what's the, who owns that?
It's like a playground.
Oh, I thought it was a hill, but.
Then there's a ridge behind the playground.
But I mean, it doesn't have an owner, it doesn't have a lot number on it. Not on these maps.
One of the maps makes it appear to be owned by Liberty.
It is, it's an old playground, and has a, a road that goes into it, hasn't been used in years, and then behind the playground, there's a ridge that drops down into the property. So, so that, that lot, the, the one you thought was R-three is R-two, that's, that's just an old, old field.
I haven't really remembered the last time I looked at the back of the parking lot, I remember more of a hill, more of a bluff anyway.
So it's, it's part of the lower parking lot address, it's part of seven oh one? But it's zoned two different ways?
It's cause it has that big ridge above it, it's really, really high above it.
I didn't know you could have a lot zoned two ways.
Yeah, split dining.
I would tend to lean more towards supporting it than I did at first, because the non-conforming property down at the end, that the roads that bound everything in, and the flume and the zoning don't really line up that well, since half of the Biltmore in the flume is, you know, is, is considered not institutional, but it's all R-three, so I feel like that road provides a good natural barrier.
There's only one end of Biltmore though, it's R-three.
Yeah, it's within that corner, that White Street and Biltmore, and everything in towards the old Thomas Road is R-three or R-two, and the one we're talking about rezoning or questioning.
And I agree, I mean, I think there's enough in place to, we're not opening the, the door wide open for this type of requests. I agree with Nancy's point, it's a little bit arbitrary why the flume for this is institutional, it's not arbitrary, we know why it is, but it still, to me, serves as a transitional between the institutional and the R-two, and that's a lot of what we're trying to establish in the city is better transitions among land uses. And regardless of how this goes, I, I would encourage the public to reach out to council, doesn't have to be in person, it can be by letter or phone, to express their opinions to the neighbors. Any other comments or questions? Do we have a, uh, motion?
I'll, I'll move for the, uh, adoption of the petition as it's drafted.
A second?
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Alright, so we are recommending approval, so good luck with the, uh, petition in front of council. And Ms. Ford, I would again encourage you and your neighbors to follow up with city council when that, when that, uh, timing approaches.
Can I ask one question though?
Well, technically not, unless we call you. Even so, unless someone wants to call you forward.
Sure.
Alright, then come on up, come on, come on back up to the table then, please. We're just, we're just following the protocol.
Well, if, I live in a, in an old neighborhood, of course, and there are a lot of apartments in the basements on the sides of the houses, and everything is zoned R-two. So why, why is that allowed? Because no one complains, right?
That's allowed in R-two, you can have an apartment in your house if you live there.
Well, if you don't live there, you're not allowed to. Forty-two years, I know who owns and who lives, so, well, you know, you see it a lot, so I'm just curious, I guess I was curious as to, well, it's a duplex like any of the others that sit there that people rent out, so.
Right, like, which, and it said the difference is owner occupied duplex is allowed in the zoning as it is now. If you feel like there are not owners living there, and you would like to make a complaint, you can do that.
If they keep the grass cut and their dogs not at large, I'm okay. You know, I'm just curious.
But there are avenues, there are avenues for enforcement. Anytime someone's not in compliance, but it does require someone to.
Well, that's why I was checking on that one, because it just seems the same, but then maybe it's not, okay.
Thank you for your interest. Alright, moving on to our second item, uh, the petition of the city of Lynchburg to adopt the Gravesmill Corridor Improvement Study as part of the city's comprehensive plan two thousand thirteen to two thousand thirty. The study recommends improvements to traffic operations, safety in multimotor element, modal elements, including measures such as additional turn lanes, adaptive and coordinated signal controls, and a multi-use path. The plan also recommends a roundabout at the intersection of Mc- McLaughlinville Road and Gravesmill Road, and a diverging diamond interchange along the Gravesmill Road, US five oh one expressway bridge. Are you presenting this, Rachel, or are we turning it over to?
Actually, Bill Winch is gonna walk us through it.
Great, come on up, please.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, go ahead and sign in.
Well, what's good, uh, good afternoon, I'm Bill Winch, I'm a principal engineer with the firm EPR out of Charlottesville. And we have been working with, uh, Central Virginia MPO, Region Two Thousand, Local Government Council, VDOT, uh, the city and the county of Bedford, uh, over the last several months to perform a traffic corridor study for Gravesmill Road. Excuse me, and, uh, does this have a pointer? Green button, yeah, okay, so as you can see here, the corridor study, uh, formally goes from, uh, Grist Mill, uh, all the way over to McConville, along Gravesmill Road, including the interchange. And we've been working on this, uh, since, uh, last fall, and we just wrapped it up, um, this spring, and, uh, presenting it to you today. So what I'll, I'll, I'll put a ten-minute presentation here, uh, we'll talk about, uh, kind of the, the process, the study process. Then the, um, a little bit about the public meetings, and we saw, I think, uh, some of you at the public meetings. And, uh, and then some of the concepts and recommendations, and how those are structured. So the, uh, the goal of the study was to, uh, you know, evaluate, uh, conditions out there now and in the future for multimodal mobility. That's the, uh, the ability to walk and, you know, ride a bicycle, or easily access transit in the corridor. As well as, uh, uh, traffic conditions, both now and, uh, and in the future, uh, year twenty, uh, forty, twenty forty-five timeframe. The, uh, uh, in doing this, we looked at the impacts of plan development, such as, uh, elements on Old Gravesmill Road, as well as, uh, Rosedale. And I'll talk a little bit more about some of the traffic projections and how that weighed in, uh, relative to, uh, the, uh, it being a regional commute corridor, uh, which in itself, uh, of course, the way Forest and Bedford's developing. And we see a lot of traffic growth coming online, uh, from the regional growth, as well as some of the local development that's, that's anticipated out there. And then as we, as we worked through the study, we came up with some recommendations for strategies to improve, uh, traffic safety and multimodal conditions. And then found opportunities, uh, in, in some direct recommendations for implementation, including grant funds such as a highway safety improvement, uh, funding stream. And early on, actually, we started this project in time to, uh, advance along, uh, an H-Zip application, uh, which was successful, and this was for traffic adaptive and coordination equipment that would be placed, uh, uh, from Old Gravesmill Road through the interchange, so an early action of the corridor study was to, uh, help the city with the grant application was successful. So in the future, um, uh, I think within the next year or so, you, you'll see improved traffic project, uh, progression through those intersections, uh, which, which will improve traffic conditions, uh, to some degree. Uh, and as well, of course, the, the other improvements, uh, we talked about how to line those up with some of the smart scale grant applications and, uh, uh, TAP funding as well. So, uh, the process followed the, uh, kind of a typical corridor study, flow of work, uh, we collected data. Traffic turning movement counts, a lot of field, uh, observations as well. Came up with future forecasts, uh, for the future year traffic volumes. Uh, then we looked at existing, how the corridor's performing currently, as well as how we anticipate it, uh, performing in the future um, under a no-build, and also build conditions, so no-build is, if you just don't do anything at all, and just continues on. We had two community meetings, and we'll talk about that. And this starts to inform the recommendations, some of the existing and, and, uh, future conditions analysis, coupled with what we hear, what we heard at the, uh, public meetings. And from there, we come up with the, uh, recommendations, um, and, and we vetted it at a second public meeting, and, uh, then finalized the document. So the public meetings were well-attended, uh, we had these at the Humane, uh, Humane Society, uh, there at Old Graves Mill, uh, Road. Uh, I had about fifty folks come in, uh, at least signed in, uh, I, I feel like there were some more that didn't sign in, if you, uh, sometimes if you're not watching the door super closely, people will kind of slide in, uh, you know, without signing in, but, uh, we had fifty folks sign in. Uh, second meeting, about thirty people. There was extensive news coverage for the first meeting, um, I think we had three networks and a newspaper, uh, really good coverage. The, uh, the second meeting occurred, I think, right after some of the tornado activities and some weather events, and I think the, the, the news folks were a little distracted, or, uh, as they should have been with other important, uh, important local, local happenings. Uh, so we didn't get quite the coverage there, but it was a well-advertised meeting, we went through all the protocols with getting the word out there. So, you know, part of the, of what we heard out here was, uh, folks were glad to see that we're trying to get in front of the development and, and be proactive in addressing the, uh, the traffic impacts from future growth, both regionally and along the corridor. By and large, uh, the folks were really concerned about the congestion through the corridor, but there was also a good bit of interest in the bicycle and pedestrian mobility options. Uh, thinking about that in the future as well. Interestingly, I guess a good bit of the, a good many of the participants, uh, lived or traveled the Old Graves Mill Road, or lived along the corridor there, the Old Graves Mill Road corridor, so there was a lot of interest in, in seeing if, uh, if at some point in time, the city or the, or the region might study that corridor as well, as, as you may know, it's, it has its traffic challenges too. But we documented each of the meetings, um, and we, we put the summaries on a project website, which is still up and running, I don't know if you've had a chance to go to that, but, uh, I'll show you the address to that a little later in the presentation. So the project website was, uh, maintained, um, throughout the, the life of the project, uh, with, with new material being, being put up on the website for folks to look at, uh, on a regular basis. So, uh, in coming up with the concepts, um, we, we looked at, again, the no-build situation out there, if we don't do anything, how might we expect the corridor to look and feel in the future? You know, we got in, uh, community input from the first community meeting, uh, came up with some recommendations, and vetted them again in the second community meeting, and then finalized our project list. And cutting right to the chase here, some of the major recommendations, I'll take you through those. And we structured the recommendations in, in, by priority, which could tie to timeframes, as well as grant funding opportunities. Uh, and also relative importance, I think, from what we heard from the, the public. So one of the major recommendations here, and this is the interchange, of course, Home Depot's over here. Right now, there's a right turn lane, uh, which ties back into the through lanes right around here. So, uh, one of the recommendations is to go ahead and widen and extend that all the way back, uh, to Creekside Drive. And what we saw in the models is this helps traffic, uh, if you're familiar with how, how it looks out there in the mornings in particular, a lot of people get in this outside through lane, cause they wanna get on the expressway. So, so there's only one lane. Part, yes, Home Depot, that's right, Taylor Brothers, that's right. Okay, yeah, sure, sure. Yeah, so, uh, you know, this is coming in from, uh, two twenty-one, if you follow it up and around. So what we see out there now is a lot of people getting in this outside through lane, uh, which gets very congested all the way back past, uh, Old Graves Mill Road and down through the bottom down there. And what we see in the models is if we have two right turn lanes getting onto the expressway ramp, which does require widening the ramp as well to a point where we can get people merged. Folks will start using both lanes, and it starts to reduce that queuing situation, so we disperse the traffic into two lanes, uh, which does help. So, uh, in, in early action recommendation here, uh, let me also point out that coming off of the ramp from five oh one southbound, instead of having folks come to a stop and then, then yield to get in, the recommendation is to extend that ramp, uh, so it connects up with the Creekside Drive turn lane into Home Depot. And this keeps the traffic flowing off of the ramp, and there's a merge situation going on here, which seems to work okay. But this, this improvement starts to unlock some of that congestion at the interchange. So we're calling this an early action, priority one, uh, recommendation. And the, the city could, uh, pursue smart scale, uh, grant for this, would be the recommended course of action, uh, next time the, the grant cycle opens up. Uh, and we provided some, some, uh, planning level costing information to, to inform that grant application. Another, uh, recommendation, and this is out in, in the county, actually. And, uh, currently, there's just two through lanes in each direction out here at Grist Mill, where the shopping center is, and there's two twenty-one up here. So providing a left turn lane at this intersection, and adding a second right turn lane coming off of Grist Mill, uh, provides a good bit of congestion relief. Cause what happens in the morning, and you may be familiar with this, is folks coming in on two twenty-one will shortcut and come around Grist Mill to make that right, and likewise, in the evening, they, they try to avoid the, uh, intersection of two twenty-one. So this starts to unlock some of that congestion, and this will work well with the, uh, with the, with an improvement that was, uh, recommended in a prior traffic corridor study for two twenty-one, uh, where they're adding an, an additional approach lane to two twenty-one up here. Excuse me, off the screen. That's currently in design, uh, it was funded through Smart Scale, and, uh, I, I think within the next couple of years, you should see, see that on the ground. So this, this coupled with the, a little more capacity at this intersection, will start to unlock the congestion, uh, through this area. And as well, you'll, you'll notice that, uh, we're suggesting some, a pedestrian crossing up here, uh, as well. So we try to incorporate the pedestrian features into these recommendations too.
Pedestrian crossing, designated that way would be one that has the button to change the lights to get across.
Right, right, that's right.
Let me just ask you a dumb question, I like the idea of having, the way you've got the lanes there. But knowing that, that people will be coming back at night, why we only have one lane on the other side? Is there, is there just more traffic in the morning than there is cutting through in the afternoon?
Well, this starts to get very impactful, yeah, if we, if we try to do dual, dual lefts, we found that the single left works pretty well, so we only need the one receiving lane. However, in the morning, um, and I think you're asking why two rights and one left?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that, that just seems to fit in there better. And as well, the, uh, uh, if we can require less green time for the traffic coming off of Grist Mill, that provides more green time for the traffic turning left. Uh, so it's just adding capacity.
I knew it was an easy answer, I just didn't know what it was.
Sure, sure. Okay, then some, uh, get into priority two recommendations, which are, are still very important, and, uh, the city should pursue these as opportunities arise, but some of these include things like, uh, I'm sorry, wrong button. A second right turn lane coming off of Creekside, so again, Home Depot's, uh, over here, this is Morse Country Store, Taylor Brothers. So a second right turn lane, uh, to help get the traffic off of Creekside, uh, into, onto, uh, Gravesmill Road. Here's a project that the city's talked about for a while, um, and it's gonna become more important if the, uh, development parcel that was once, uh, English, I guess English construction had something to do with the development group there, big regional shopping area, so. So with the economy pick back up, if that commercial parcel starts to move forward again, this will become even more important. But currently, there's a good bit of congestion at, here at McConville already. So building a roundabout at this intersection really unlocks the congestion and the queuing
That's the place where you send your kids to learn how to do a four-point turn. Not many people pass, unfortunately, so the roundabout probably saved them that.
Are there two, how many lanes are on the left there?
Well, this is existing, so there's, the four-lane section picks up, two lanes in each direction picks up on this side currently. So really, this is just dropping the circle into the existing intersection.
Oh, I see, so.
We're not in a progress nation.
Yeah, Green Hopkins is up there at the top.
Yeah, well, I know where we are, but, so if you're coming in from the lower left, you would, and you want to turn right, you would just get in the right lane. And if you want to go anywhere else, you get into the left lane.
That's right.
And coming out of the roundabout though, you've got two lanes to get into, so you just can take your pick.
Right. And this is, this is just a conceptual sketch. The actual design drawings would look more like a real roundabout in the planning level, showing the intention.
That just seems like a textbook place for a roundabout.
Yeah, it works well, works well. It'd be a good improvement there. And of course, you all are, have kind of pioneered the roundabout world here over the last several years, so that's good.
People still haven't learned how to use them, but maybe they will.
What's funny, probably fifteen years ago, I'd get up and talk about a roundabout and people'd look at me like I was a green Martian or something. But now you can lay it out there and cities like Lynchburg have embraced it and moved forward.
Requesting them.
Yeah, well, you think how many, many intersections and speeded the traffic up down, it's really, I mean, it makes it a joy to drive around the city now.
Yeah, yes. Some other things include a, adding a right turn lane over here at Mill Race. And this is, we looked at the turn lane warrants. There's warrants for when you need a turn lane and there's enough rights combined to the throughs to warrant that turn lane onto Mill Race. So.
One question?
Yes, sir.
You had talked about considering, consider bringing your side driving into signalization. Can you clarify that for me?
Yeah, sorry about that. So currently, this side really, like so many older traffic signals, there's often, or sometimes there's one approach that isn't really part of the traffic signal. You think of Fort and McKinney, Fort and McKinney, we're kind of near McKinney and Toledo.
I see it now, I understand. I was, I was trying to figure out where this was. This is down.
To the west, over closer to Bedford. Yeah, so bring this side into the signal.
Right.
Yeah. Okay, so, and I use this graphic. So in that same area, you know, we've got this four-lane section coming in from the county with no turn lanes, no center divider or median of any type. So, and what we saw from the crash analysis is that for some of these entrances, particularly over here on the west side of the corridor, again, between Grist Mill and Mill Race, we're seeing a lot of rear-end crashes, some angle crashes. These are people stopping in that inside through lane to access those businesses. Folks don't anticipate that and there's, you know, crashes occur. So as the volumes continue to grow out here in the future, we're going to need to consider widening out there to add a center turn lane. But it wouldn't just be a center turn lane. The idea would be to have a landscape median down the middle and then carve out turn lanes in particular locations that make sense. So we provided this typical section and described the, how this would work on the west end of the corridor and as well to provide some multimodal options. We're suggesting that there be a multi-use path on one side or the other. And at this level of study, we're showing this typical as the intention out here, but come time to design something, would be the time to make the choice of which side of the road it's on depending on impacts and how things are developing and give the public more input opportunities at that point in time. So, you know, we kind of look at this as a higher level study. There's some decisions that still need to be made later down the road. But this gets on the table what the intent is, and that is to have a center median that could be landscaped with organized left turn lane locations as well as the, a multi-use path for folks to ride their bikes on and walk along the corridor. And as you might imagine, once Rosedale or if, whatever it's going to be called in the future, once that parcel develops and there's more activity going on out there, there'll be more need to connect up to the corridor in a multimodal manner. Then longer term, and we're viewing this as, you know, if and when, I'm still calling it Rosedale, I assume that's still the name of the parcel, but when, if and when it develops and the traffic really picks up out here, the models are showing us that you really need, starting from their entrance, to have a third through lane that chases all the way up to connect to this third through lane that I told you about for the priority one project. So this is cutting in another lane all the way through here and as well, a dual left turning onto Old Graves Mill, which then causes the need for two receiving lanes up the hill. And with the traffic growth projected out there, which is, you know, a good two percent a year, which is a lot, it's a lot, you know, forty percent more traffic out there in the future, you can imagine.
There's already apartment complexes.
What was it, two hundred plus unit apartment complex? It's.
The elements phase two, right?
On the lower left-hand corner.
Into the Humane Society.
Right there. And so, you know, I don't know if two percent's even high enough. I mean, I, you know, it just feels low. But anyway, but I still think, I think that just makes a sharper line emphasis under your point.
And quite honestly, there's some things this doesn't consider that could change this picture, this longer-term picture. Some of these ideas are brought up by the public, but some thoughts about better connectivity over to the Breeze Wood area, you know, whether it's running Creekside up to connect up towards Breeze Wood or if Rosedale comes in and there's more connections there. And with your 221-501 project, if that really starts to unlock that congestion, more people stay on 221 versus coming around Graves Mill, then that could help mitigate some of the traffic growth here. So things, this is a longer-term recommendation and we just have to kind of wait and see how things start shaking out as you move forward.
The only thing I would ask, I don't know if there's any answers, is that whole spur of Old Graves Mill Road that comes, you know, from the, where your marker is there, just go to the right and it swings, you know, swings along that road.
That connector road, yeah.
I don't know what the word would be, but that, that's just, you've got to keep it open for businesses over there, but that's just a disaster. And it's almost like one of those things you wish you could lift out of the model and do something else with it. My question, my background, with that as background, it's almost like no matter what you do, that's going to screw it up. Is there, I mean, is that something that you even consider? This is a general question, not a.
Yeah, well, it's a great question and this was a challenge for us. You know, our charge was really to look at Old Graves Mill, but to get our models to work, we had to do some, actually included this connector road in and within our traffic models where we do our simulations and measure queues and do the things we need to do to inform these recommendations, we had to make some assumptions about improvements here at this, I apologize, I don't have a bigger map here, but at this intersection we're talking about. So that could be, if the grades allow, roundabout, a bigger intersection altogether. There could be some bigger strategies, but one thing we made note of is that, you know, that's going to need some more study in the future. We could only go so far with this. Sometimes these corridor studies are like that, you start bumping into the next thing and then the next thing.
Well, I mean, I could use that cut through all the time. The biggest, you know, problem that I'm now describing. But what struck me over the last little bit of time I've been driving, it almost makes more sense to go down to the light and then turn left.
Right.
That's what I've started to do. I used to cut through all the time.
Right, you're going back the other way, yes, ma'am.
Sure.
Because the traffic's gotten just so much heavier in the last couple of years.
But it's just, it's just one of those situations where the problem with it though is, is that coming the other, you know, when you're coming from the expressway, that's a logical turnoff.
Right.
In certain hours of the day, I mean, it makes perfect sense, but it just, everything you do is going to be mitigated by people like me who are going to, who are going to hit that shortcut and create problems. So that's, that's why I was asking kind of a general question about that. How do you, I mean, how do you handle it or do you handle it or?
Yeah, it's going to need to be handled. We kind of had to draw the line at some point with this corridor study due to budgetary constraints and time constraints. But it was a frequently brought up topic at the meeting, at the public meetings.
I mean, at some point, it may not be a convenient shortcut anymore. And that's just what it is.
Well, that's true.
I mean, you know, not every road needs a level of service A or B. And, you know, if, like you're describing, if you learn that it's just as easy or easier to go down to the light, then that becomes your habit.
Yeah. I'd ask you, I think maybe you questioned another one of the people in the study about the impact if that road, when it hit Old Graves Mill, had right turns only. So you could only turn right in and only turn right onto Graves Mill. That would not impact that, it doesn't look like that would impact that study that much because you didn't add a lot of incoming traffic heading towards Old Graves Mill Road, did you? Kind of focused on most of the traffic going down to Old Graves Mill Road from Graves Mill.
What we see, and that, there was, that was a good idea and there were some other neat ideas passed around about restricting, you know, directions of traffic and the turns you can make down here. The challenge we were finding is that the volume, the combined volume of left turns here, turning onto Creekside, coupled with the volumes turning on Old Graves Mill down here, was such that if you don't allow, or if you don't allow, but if you can't make the left down here and everybody, all these people come down here.
Right.
Then you've got, you've got a real problem. Now, making this a dual left really helps. It's kind of intuitive, right? You've got one left here now and one left here now. So you do two lefts and zero lefts.
That's why I said, and there's a lot of people who work on that cut through, right? There's a lot of people employed back there, so a lot of people turning aren't, are doing now what you do and what I do, which is going down to the intersection. But I didn't know what impact that would have. So I guess that's one of the things, only time tells really.
I think so. And two, I do think at some point, Old Graves Mill needs to be studied as a continuation of this. I mean, we just had to draw the line, couldn't keep going with it, but it's got a lot of issues with traffic and it's a whole other topic, I guess, and multimodal. But we did hear from a fellow who does represent the development community from time to time, that I guess this, a lot of this land is owned by some developer down in Martinsville, hearsay to me, so careful about the record here, I guess. But, and apparently, the theory is at some point, there may be some higher and better uses coming along.
Oh, I see what you're talking about, Taylor Brothers, you know, about Rover, that guy. I see where you're going with that.
So, you know, there's some issues that are going to have to be faced here in the future with, with all that. So what, here we are. So this is an interesting recommendation and this is called a diverging diamond interchange configuration.
If we thought people had a hard time with roundabouts.
This is considered an innovative intersection. Currently, there are two on the ground that I'm aware of in the state. One is up at Route I-66 and Route 15 and around Haymarket. The other is Zion Crossroads, Route 15 and Route 64. If you're passing through those areas, I'd encourage you to pull off the road, drive through it a few times. It's.
Will you be supplying a guide to explain to you how the lanes work for your first trip through?
Actually, I did the one in Haymarket first time and I was, I recognized it this because of the presentation.
Yeah, I did too.
You know, it's brainless, you just follow the signs.
Big signs.
Big sense, yeah.
Yeah, but it was exciting to see and it's like, yeah, this does work.
Big overhead signs and the roads set up to, you know, where you just follow the road. And so this, this is the, this solves the interchange congestion issue. And the reasons why is because it simplifies the traffic signal operation. And also, see if you're coming from over here at McConville, say, as an example, you've got what we call a two-phase traffic signal, so it's either red for this direction or it's red for this direction. You don't have to wait for all the lefts to turn. So out of each hundred seconds, the through movements receive a lot more green time than a conventional intersection. And then two, when you get down to the ramp movement, you're not making a left across other traffic, you're just flowing straight onto the ramp. Likewise, here, the left just flows straight on into the through.
Yeah.
So these are proven out to be much safer intersection configurations, interchange configurations, much higher capacity. And it's our understanding that, and I think the figures, within the next twenty years or so, these bridges are going to have to be rehabbed. So with that rehab comes the opportunity to reconfigure all of this at a reduced cost. And another feature of this divergent diamond interchange is that its footprint is much smaller than most interchange configurations.
Oh, that's interesting.
Yeah, so you'll see these retrofit onto existing sites like Zion Crossroads. Really, all they had to do was reconfigure the tops of the ramps a little bit and redo the signals.
Because you don't need a clover leaf.
You don't need a clover leaf, you don't have to rebuild the bridges, which is always the big ticket item.
I hadn't thought about that. I was thinking it was pretty big at Zion Crossroads, but I guess not.
It's basically the footprint that was there. They didn't have to widen the bridges.
You still, okay, this is what, Peckerton Chevy or something over here on the right, right? So if I'm getting off and want to turn left and I'm in the left lane and I go, but there is a stoplight, there is a signal there or?
Yes.
But I can, I just have to yield, right?
This would still be signalized, but.
But since everybody's going in the same direction, it's just a yield kind of thing?
Well, it works with this other signal over here.
Oh, yeah.
So it's just, it's just a very efficient signal configuration.
But you're not going across traffic.
That's right.
You're going on.
Yeah.
It's like a signalized merge.
Yeah. And if the light's green, then yeah, you just come off the ramp and keep rolling.
And if the light on the other side is green, stopping the oncoming traffic, so you're going this way and they're.
So you still have as many lights as you would. You have a light on each end.
Yeah, but I'll tell you right now, if I haven't done this, and remember, at Zion's Crossroads, you're not coming off of 501, you're coming off of 64. And that's like the first place to stop, go get gas or get something to eat or go to the bathroom. So a lot, my point being, traffic is much higher than what it's going to be here. And to everybody's point, I realize it looks confusing on paper, it is really smooth. It's like a roundabout experience. You go, why didn't we think of this years ago? But so much more smoothly. I mean, the only thing I would argue on this one is, again, the traffic is so much different, this is overkill, but I mean, it's a great solution, particularly given your footprint. I didn't even realize the footprint too.
From a cost comparison standpoint, it's very cost efficient relative to other ways to fix this.
But you're proposing a lot of improvements under priority one.
Right.
So are we spending, recommending a lot of expenditures upfront that kind of double spending to then do this down the road?
No, we looked at that and we'd have to two-lane this ramp anyway to receive the traffic coming off of Old Graves Mill. And, you know, the point we were making in there is that.
No, that's what that last statement said.
Yeah, it really doesn't preclude it.
Gotcha.
Just have to be mindful when this is designed about where everything should be in the future.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, so this is a key recommendation. And another nice thing about this is that through the SmartScale process with VDOT is projects get extra points if you use one of these innovative designs because they're safer and lower cost. VDOT's really encouraging them. So as far as being able to compete for SmartScale funds, this would get extra points in that arena as well.
So I might see it in my lifetime.
Hope so.
For a long time.
I noticed you've been going to your doctor really regularly. A lot of TNC time.
So all the recommendations, I think, are laid out pretty clearly. We tried to be very graphical with them. And it gives these, this report will give the city a good menu of opportunities to seek implementation opportunities within the future. Hopefully, this will help you move forward and continue to make Lynchburg a better place in terms of mobility. And with that, I don't know if you have any other questions?
Questions or comments?
No, I went to the second public meeting and it was, it was very interesting because I think there were more than thirty people there, I agree with you.
Yeah.
I think there were people slipping in and didn't want to get on the list. But there was, it was interesting. There was a lot of interchange, of interaction going on between you and Scott and the others there. People asking, I thought, good questions and making good comments and I thought that, I mean, I'm real excited about what I've, what I've seen. I think you all have done a nice job of, you know. I mean, I'm real excited about what I've, what I've seen, I think you all have done a nice job of, you know, of addressing what's just a very challenging situation out there. I don't know that it's going to solve all the problems, but I guess it falls into that category, it's made a bad situation better.
I think it's also, it's a useful tool for us as we consider petitions from this area, especially as Rosedale moves forward.
Well, and that's something we labored over, you know, when we got that original petition for Rosedale, and the, you know, and the congestion we already knew was out there, what was going to happen? And thank goodness, you know, obviously, trying to, it may be a little bit behind schedule, but we're getting to some things done to ease the traffic congestion out there that's only going to get worse.
The other situation too, so many towns we've argued, or not argued, but consider, how are we going to fix problems that we, you know, we've worked out in places we inherited, in other words? And this is a really elegant solution to solve a huge problem. And the idea of, you know, make it more attractive to outside funding is fabulous.
Well, the petition is to recommend that the city of Lynchburg adopts this Graves Mill corridor improvement study as part of the comprehensive plan. So if there are no more comments or questions, do we have a motion?
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
Oh, yep, you're exactly right, thank you, Rachel. So, thank you for the presentation.
My pleasure.
Very informative and great job on it, so is anyone from the public who would like to speak in favor or against this petition? All right, public hearing is closed. So again, the petition is to recommend the city adopts this, do we have a motion?
I guess I'll, I'll be happy to move it.
Second? All in favor? All right, opposed? All right, we are recommending approval to council, thank you very much, everyone. Any other items? Robin, I will not be here August eighth, I'll follow it with you and Tom as we get closer to that.
Okay, I don't think you're going to have a meeting in two weeks, I don't know anything on it, but I'll have to double check with Tom before I officially cancel it.
Do we have any idea kind of what this, I mean, I mean, one of the things I've been looking for is the downtown study, is that going to hit before the end of the summer?
Yes, so we are working on locking in our public, our public meeting. Which, of course, you all will be invited to, along with the public, to hear the recommendations of the plan and talk about it with us.
It's going to be in August, September, just.
Looking at August.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get an idea, just rough idea of what's going to hit.
Twenty-second would be good.
Okay, is that your birthday or something?
It's when he's back.
I think the eighth would be great. All right, well, yeah, just keep Robin posted with travel plans over the summer, so.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, I hope, I hope we're not going to, I'm not going to ask city council for a leave of absence this time, but I am leaving from the ninth of August, and won't be back till the fourteenth of September. So I hope it doesn't mess anybody up as far as.
Well, you'll capture that eighth meeting, the eighth meeting, right, like I say.
Well, if we have one, and Robin said she didn't think we'd have one, but.
Oh, in two weeks, on the twenty-fifth of July, is what I was talking about. I'm pretty sure you have the one on the eighth.
Oh, okay, so I will be here then, okay, I will be here then.
Good.
Now, the lean oil change facility.
I saw that one. Yeah, that looks.
And maybe, downtown plan won't be ready yet, so now that might be it, I can't think of anything else.
All right, well, any else? Motion to adjourn? Second? All in favor? We are adjourned, thank you all very much.